Session for April tenth, two thousand and twenty four. First up, we have the annual professional municipal clerks week, Michelle Stevenson.
Thank you. Last year I came to came to the board asking for support to recognize our municipal clerks in Roscommon County, and that includes our township and village. We don't have any city clerks. However, um, you know, I don't know if you, if I'm sure everybody's aware of everything that they endured with the beginning of early voting. You know, with Clerk Milburn participating in the pilot program in November to kind of help give us a little bit of insight and provide feedback to the on the state level as well. And then going into February, where countywide, well statewide, early voting was implemented and all of our clerks persevered through that. And, you know, it's just a, it was just a the beginning of what they're going to be enduring. What all of us are going to be enduring this year for two thousand and twenty four election cycle. And, you know, they have to do that on top of their regular day to day duties. The township clerks and the village clerk, they have a multitude of responsibilities. It's not just elections. And I would just appreciate it if the board would adopt this resolution at the next board meeting to recognize the fifty fifth annual professional municipal clerks week, which is May fifth through eleventh of two thousand and twenty four. Thank you.
Animal control millage, Director Didi Mendig.
Morning Commissioners, Jody and Michelle. I am here this morning to ask the board's approval to put a millage for the Roscommon County Animal Shelter Animal Control on the August election for the millage. We are asking for a point three nine two eight mil for a four year period from two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty seven for the maintenance and overall operations for the animal shelter and animal control. Oh, we were asking for the board's approval to be able to put that millage on the ballot for August. It would be a renewal. It would not be an increase for the animal shelter and animal control.
Currently, right now, there's two of them, right? And you're just going to combine them?
We are just going to combine them. Yes, there's two right now.
I could buy me.
Go ahead.
I could buy me both of them. That's okay.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Equalization report in the L four zero two nine, Director Jamie Houserman. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Commissioners of Roscommon County. As you know, I am Jamie Houserman, your equalization director. In front of you today is the two thousand and twenty four Roscommon County Equalization Report. See. At this point, I hereby certify that the assessment roles of the townships and village have been examined and that we find the roles relatively equal as equalized. We are recommending that the values be equalized on taxable property by class in Roscommon County for the year two thousand and twenty four in compliance with the section two zero nine five and two eleven point three four of Michigan compiled law in accordance with the assessment role equalization certificates. I'll go through the report with you and some highlights. Pages four, five, and six are the mandated reports that has to be sent to the State of Michigan Department of Treasury. What you'll notice on this review, as you've seen in years past, is that yet again this year, two thousand and twenty four, we've set a new record high for assessed value of that property within our county. At this point, we've received again another over four hundred million dollars in additional value from two thousand and twenty three to two thousand and twenty four. That's just following real estate market. That's not something that we design in my office. That's something that that we use as a measure of the real estate market. That real estate market for residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural properties went up a total of eighteen point three percent from last year to this year. If you remember from the prior year, we saw a twenty percent increase a year ago. So in the last two years, we're in the neighborhood of a forty percent increase in property value. That is consistent with most of northern Michigan and a little behind some of the southern Michigan areas. Pages seven through eleven are breakdown by class with each township showing assessed value. The ratio that we recommended. Those seven pages, seven through eleven are, as I said, the agricultural, commercial, industrial, residential, and personal property values. Page number twelve is the numerical and then graphical charts that show the values that we have that we're recommending for this year's equalized values. You look at our residential class, it accounts for the vast majority of our property within our township, about ninety two percent of the property within our whole county is residential. So that means we've got very limited commercial. We've got almost no industrial and we've got almost no agricultural property. Pretty, pretty not eye opening, I guess, something that you you would have felt being in our community. Pages fourteen and fifteen are the change by percentage from townships from last year to this year. So you can look at each of those townships and you can see what percentages of change that they had over the from last year to this year. If you look at the larger values of our townships, what you're seeing is that they're carrying the strongest weights for our residential class, thus bringing it to that total of eighteen percent increase. Page sixteen is a recap of the assessed values and the recommended county equalized values along with all of the true cash values being at fifty percent. It makes our assessed value and county equalized value the same for two thousand and twenty three or two thousand and twenty four, I'm sorry. And this is due to the dedication and diligence of the assessors and the March Board of Review members among our many townships. In the months leading up to this change, we prepared with the assessors by working with them hand in hand. The assessors did an excellent job. In February, we spent a significant amount of time auditing work from the townships and then helping them with corrections of deficiencies. At that point, in March, the Board of Review took over in each of those townships. Again, they did a great job. We appreciate the relationships that we've built with the townships and the staff. Things went really well again this year. That that's super helpful. I think I only had a phone call or two on throughout Board of Review from the townships, needing some some extra assistance. So page seventeen is the recommendation of the county equalized value and the taxable value. This is the first time you're seeing that taxable value number, which, as you know, relates to revenue. So in two thousand and sixteen, we had our first ever increase in taxable value since we started collecting this data in nineteen ninety four, first ever like peak or or real significant increase in taxable value. That year, the taxable value increase was nine point one one percent. I'm sorry, this year is nine point one one percent. Last year was eight point four seven. So it seems pretty interesting to me that we've got the same CPI. I shouldn't say the same CPI. CPI last year was seven point nine capped at five percent. This year was five point one capped at five percent. So you would assume that we've seen a very similar increase from last year to this year at that eight and a half percent. Well, what I need to tell you is that there is a change in legislation that has changed the reporting numbers due to the Disabled Veterans Act. Though disabled veterans in the past, it always that value would always come off of our numbers. Starting this year, it stays on our numbers. And so if you remove that value that we will not be collecting on, you'll be back at about that eight and a half percent for this year. So my recommendation for budgeting type questions would be in the eight and a half percent increase. See, page eighteen is our last year's taxable value numbers compared to this year's taxable value numbers. Like, like I said, our reporting this year will be slightly skewed because we're not removing that veteran exemption value. However, it should give you a pretty good snapshot of where each of the townships would fall. Page nineteen is a chart that shows the relationship of the assessed value to the taxable value since nineteen ninety four, when taxable value was created. If you look at these, what I'll call hills and valleys, you'll see where you had a pretty significant increase going. And then you had that recessionary period, two thousand and nine, ten, eleven, twelve, in that era. And then you started to see that big increase again, really swinging hard in two thousand and sixteen that has not stopped at this point. What you'll see from that graph, or at least what I see from that graph, is at some point, you know, we'll hit that peak and we'll start to come down. I sat in front of you last year and told you I thought that that would be coming. I really do still think that that is coming. I would have thought we'd just seen it a little earlier than now. I tracked the Consumer Price Index for you from from the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics. I can tell you right now, we're only trending at a two point three percent increase for next year, where we've seen two years in a row at five percent, the maximum. So I think we're definitely slowing down in the real estate market. Prices are still incredibly strong. There's not the volume, though, that there had been in the past. Those are the pages that I have for you. Do you have questions for me? Oh, I should tell you, those last two pages, I'm sorry, are the assessed values from nineteen seventy five through two thousand and twenty four. So nearly fifty years of data, just giving you an idea of what our assessed values looked like throughout history in that era, that nearly fifty year process. And then that is all I have for you. If you have questions for me.
Just comment, just comment. Thanks, you for being here today, Jamie. In regard to the veterans, just like to go on, they earn their benefit. Just want to make sure that people understand that those disabled veterans have earned that benefit.
I absolutely agree with you.
Thank you.
The legislation has not changed in in any negative light for them. The laws have changed in the reporting process. In fact, they did get a little bit more positive legislation last year. Starting in two thousand and twenty five will be their last filing date as long as they're one hundred percent permanent in total. So there are a handful that are not that will continue to file annually. But for the mass vast majority, this process will be more simplistic for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or concerns? At this time, then I'd like to respectfully ask you if you would adopt a motion and resolution at your next meeting in two weeks at your regular meeting. That motion and resolution to allow for your chairperson, Darlene Censor, your Director of Equalization, myself, Jamie Houserman, and your county clerk, Michelle Stevenson, to sign the statement of acreages and valuations, the the L forty twenty twenty four that you have in front of you, showing that we've equalized Roscommon County and also allowing the County Board of Commissioners to certify those rules. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Absolutely. This is also available on our website. Was it a page anybody that would like a copy?
Have a great day.
Thanks, you too.
Economic Development and MSU Millage.
Morning, I'm Julie Darden. I'm the District Director for MSU Extension and Roscommon County is one of my counties and here on behalf of Brenda.
I'm Catherine Metner and I'm the Chair of the Roscommon County Economic Development Corporation.
So Brenda was not able to be with us today. She's at a conference. And so we are, we've shared an outline of potential millage to be approved by the board that would fund Economic Development Corporation as well as MSU Extension. We began talking about this in November of two thousand and twenty three as a potential, how we could work together to make this happen. And we also talked to some other entities that were once funded as part of the part of the general fund that had to be reduced in two thousand and twenty two. And so what we're proposing here would allow us to return to a level of funding that that would bring back service that we've that we've lost, that we're filling the gap with for both agencies since that reduction. And as outlined on our second page, the way that we have brought these two together is essentially looking at what would need to be what what MSU Extension would need to fulfill the memorandum of agreement in addition to having full time support staff in our office and bringing our four H program coordinator to full time. And so that's and then the EDC partnership funded at fifty thousand dollars helps them fulfill the contract that or continue the contract that they had, excuse me, that they have with the county and also to give funds to some operating for for the committee and corporation. So I'm really interested to know what kinds of questions you have. We've tried to outline the cost to the average homeowner who might experience this increase. The total for the millage combined is point one three and with a with an amount of point one zero that could support MSU Extension and point zero three. And obviously, since we just heard from Jamie about this taxable value, the calculations were made on the two thousand and twenty three values. So they they will they will gather more funding total than what we had than what we had initially projected.
Just a comment as well, MSU Extension and Economic Development has had a long history of collaboration. MSU Extension provides a number of resources for economic development and the EDC does the legwork for economic development. We've been active in working with providing more housing, which is a critical component for attraction and retention of businesses in not only Roscommon County, but actually it's something nationwide. We're active in trying to grow broadband. We have a marketing program that is telling the world about Roscommon County. We do, we do do some fundraising, but we know that this is a small county and to fundraise to support the EDC will never reach the limit of what it actually costs. We pay twenty five thousand to to Michigan Works for Brenda Bachelder as our EDC Director. And we also you know, for training and that kind of thing, but we are asking for basically the minimum to maintain economic development and also the partnership with MSU.
And and I'll just say on our behalf that one of the things that we see that we can support economic development, and I've talked with with Brenda a little bit about this, we had a shared support staff with the the Spongy Moth Suppression Program, Gypsy Moth Suppression Program here in Roscommon. I think we could probably have a partnership with the EDC and provide them with some clerical support. It might not need to be a fifty percent, but that would allow someone to help with some scheduling and communications that currently fall on Brenda or on the members of the the Corporation Committee who are acting in volunteer roles on that board, but are also business owners and and leaders in their own in their own agencies. So I think you're familiar with the work that MSU Extension does. And we also are putting front and center the work that we do with youth in the community and we're hopeful that that there's a there's a desire to invest in our programs from the taxpayers and from the voters in Roscommon.
And just one further comment is you really don't realize what you have until it's gone. So we're hoping that we can restore some semblance to our programs because if we can't other that funding, EDC will be gone. And most people don't understand the impact of an economic development organization, but it's huge in any county. And the really successful counties that have an economic development group are most successful counties in Michigan are ones that have an economic development driving that economy.
Any questions?
Just for general knowledge, I've been sitting on the EDC board probably for twenty years. I've been involved in the peripheral with MSU for many years. Garrett went to some of the programs. I believe, in my opinion, this this meets the basic requirements for a millage. And I believe strongly believe that commissioners should move this this village forward. But I'm looking for some some interesting comments from our commissioners. Because I don't want to leave today wondering what what the future of this millage is going to look like. I'm hoping we have some spirited discussion. Opinion, Madam Chair, silence is consent. Silence is consent. If there's no discussion or debate, in my opinion, this should be moved forward.
There's only one other maybe question that we haven't answered for potential voters. And that is the term of the millage. So we're talking about point one three mils. So thirteen hundredths of of a mil. And so if someone has a home relative to the median home value of Roscommon County, which according to the U.S. Census of two thousand and twenty two, and we just, Jamie, talked about how values have increased. So we're, we know that it may be more than this. One hundred and thirty three thousand, four hundred dollars. This millage would cost that homeowner six dollars and sixty seven cents per year, or sorry, eight dollars and sixty seven cents per year, with two dollars of that going to the EDC and six dollars and sixty seven cents supporting MSU Extension four H programs. If someone has a home value close to a hundred thousand dollars, that total is six dollars and fifty cents. And I I'm not, I don't think that's insignificant at all. You know, I know those tax, I pay taxes too. Those tax dollars increase and they and they add up quickly. But it's a very, very small percentage to have a big impact. Both of our organizations leverage much more than what we're asking from voters. So, for example, within our office space, you know, the the staff that we have there are not, their salaries are not included in this because we have state dollars, we have federal dollars that are bringing value to this area. EDC does the same thing, you know, brings in potential for grants, brings in potential for development, for promotion, for attraction, not only of businesses, but also of tourists, which these communities really value and and can rely on. And and I think it's a strong statement. So even with the cost, which again, I'm not saying is insignificant, there it's leveraging much more than what than what we're actually charging the voters. The term is six years, and that is something that we discussed in partnership. And we settled on as as a way of, you know, thinking carefully and strategically about how that might put us in a different cycle of elections. But, you know, this is all tentative based on the approval of of commissioners. It is not something that we are coming here and expecting to have approved at all.
Yes.
Well, you sold me on the term investment in the future. That's key. That's key for me. I think it's key for the people that I represent, Mike, and my township, and my county, part of my county. And I think county at large, this is an investment in the future. Part of this this millage as it stands right now, it may need some additional tweaking, but obviously you have a great start.
Any other questions? Are you wanting this on the August or the November?
I mean, potentially on the August. However, if there's more, you know, if there's more discussion or deliberation that's needed, we we will move forward at the discretion of the commissioners. So also, I think I can speak for both of us and also for the members of the EDC that are here. We would welcome any of you who have questions that you'd like maybe to address with us individually to please, you know, seek us out and we'd be happy to talk to you about about this proposal, why we've chosen to work together in this realm. I understand that people may not fully understand what each of us are bringing into this equation, but we were hopeful that maybe fewer questions would is more helpful to the the average voter. At the same time, we recognize and we've tried to break out for you at least, you know, what the costs are for each of the programs so that that's visible.
Yes.
In respect to Commissioner Ross, because he's not here today, I would recommend if it meets within the framework of of the timeline in regard to put it on the on the ballot, that we see Commissioner Ross against comments. It also gives the commissioners an opportunity to digest information and be able to think about their question maybe for the future. So maybe I was a little abrupt when I said silence is consent, is we do maybe need some discussion. But I would appreciate if the if the chairman would consider putting this on maybe for our next board session to discuss it and hopefully move forward on it, either support, yes or no. My my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Michelle, Madam Chair, does it meet within the parameters if we waited a couple of weeks? Obviously, Michelle's comments are are key.
What did you comment on the this?
He was just asking, I think he was just inquiring as far as the filing deadline for August, which is May fourteenth. So so we're good.
Please, Catherine.
So I'm staying because.
Yep, your Brownfield Development Authority appointment.
Brett, as you know, Brenda's not here and I'm the Vice Chair of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And we are asking that you approve the appointment of Tammy Frisbee to the Brownfield. Hopefully, we get forward to the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Tammy Frisbee's in the audience.
Next would be the General Operating Millage, Commissioner Wolfson.
Yes, our last millage we asked for did not pass. We're encountering some problems with our heating systems in the buildings. And then we have some other issues that need to be taken care of on our grounds. And I'm thinking maybe we ought to seek a half a mil in this next election or infrastructure here in the building so that we can deal with these issues before next winter when we are going to be really relying on the heat system. And I just but I can get some support to bring this forward at the next meeting.
Questions? Comments?
I'm 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 in favor of that.
I can support this a hundred percent after taking a tour with Bill, the Midwestern Director.
And I appreciate your time and effort on this, Rex.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have next the Consent Agenda, discussion of the whole. I will let Commissioner Milburn start with this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michigan as a whole, people probably know this, is dismal in regard to transparency in government. I know the Board of Commissioners has a motion to have a consent agenda. I feel toward the consent agenda is that it's not being transparent enough with the public. You know, we talk about transparency, and I've said this before, you know, we really have to be transparent. I believe that if we have a consent agenda and we don't hear the claims and accounts, we don't hear any correspondence in this regard that's important imperative to the public, that we're not being as transparent as we should be or could be. I don't believe they were hiding anything. I never have felt that. The bottom line, I think, for transparency's sake, it's imperative that the controller give a report. Because at the end of the day, the the controller's report is is very important to the county. Kind of gives a snapshot of what's going on for the last couple of three weeks. So I believe that we should move forward with, and if we don't go back to the old way, at least a hybrid where we could at least, if the controller bring up a report, bring up some correspondence that's important and for the public, the class A's and claims and accounts being verbalized. So my thoughts, Madam Chair. I I I hope we can have some debate.
I'm perfectly fine with the consent agenda the way it is. We we have, it's in our board rules to do it this way. And I'm not in favor of changing the board rules at this time.
My feelings is Jody used to read the reports. Last year, they wanted her to put everything on paper, which she has done. I'm not in favor of Jody reading a report. What we're doing is perfectly legal. It's out there on the web where everyone can pick up and look at all our paperwork. And it's something we voted on to make the change, and everyone agreed the first of the year. I think it should stay the way it is. Thank you.
I obviously disagree wholeheartedly.
Well, you got one other person there.
My feeling on this is that I don't think as far as Jody reading her report that it's fair to single her out. The report is public knowledge. It's placed in our agenda packets. Everyone can pull it off the website. They can read it. We are going to also supply her report on the table for anybody that comes to our meeting so that they can have a copy if they wish to have one. Um, I guess my feeling is that if we have her read a report, then I think every department director has to come in and read a report to us once a month. It's not fair to single her out. The consent agenda was added to the board rules. We did vote on it. I haven't received any phone calls or emails requesting us to do something different. I know Commissioner Milburn has stated that he has received some feedback. I don't think that we're not being transparent. We're not hiding anything. If we were hiding something, we wouldn't be supplying everybody with our agenda packets that, you know, and have those accessible. I don't know if any other commissioner has received a complaint or vacation.
I have not.
Um, through conversations, I have found that our controller is okay with the consent agenda as it is. I know we use the word transparency. Transparent behaviors include being open to feedback. We are open to feedback. We allow public to come here and speak two different times through our meetings. We communicate clearly and honestly. We are, we place items on our agendas and we discuss them right here in our meetings. And defaulting to sharing information, we do this every time we put our agenda packets out there for people to see or print. I just, my feelings, I don't have a problem with incorporating like claims and accounts when I go through and I read those things and giving a total. I don't have a problem doing those types of things. So that if somebody did want to hear that, we can incorporate it. But to separate or to stop the consent agenda, I guess I'm not in favor of. Yes.
Obviously, I disagree. The kicker is is that, you know, we we, I doubt very much that anybody in the audience would be supplied right now with all the claims and accounts, correspondence from A through G or the monthly department reports. I don't think it takes long to be able to give all those reports. And I think it's just important for the public to be able to recognize the fact that we're we're doing those reports verbally. If I was online, I wouldn't have any of those reports in front of me. And if you remember correctly, I was the one that wasn't supportive of Jody having a report to begin with. I've always been supportive of having maybe a bullet format format where she could give a report. Because Jody does a report on Friday, things change during Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. But I I believe it's imperative that Jody give some kind of report for the for the county because Jody's report is one of the most important reports that we get every two weeks. Those are my thoughts. Obviously, I'll stand with the decision of the of the board, but I wanted at least verbalize my comments. I do believe transparency is key, and I believe we could be more transparent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion? Okay. With that being said, the meeting is adjourned.
Excuse me, take a five minute break first. Were you adjourned?
Commissioner Wilson would like to have a five minute break before we adjourn this meeting. So we will meet back here at 9:42.
Well, this is about today's meeting.
Oh, they know. 9:42. And or resolution to make it onto the next meeting, we have to have support of two people. So on the Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, our clerk gave her report, but we did not ask if we had support to move it on to the next. Do I have support to move that to the next?
Yes. I'll second it.
Okay. Um, same with animal control millage. I know that one did, okay. So we do. Equalization report in the L4029.
Yes.
Economic Development and the MSU Millage. Okay. The Brownfield Development Authority Appointment.
Yes.
Okay. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene for our next meeting at 10 o'clock. Since 2024 at 10 PM to order, 10 AM, sorry. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, the United States of America. To the Republic of America, foundation under God, individual, and freedom of justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Russo. Ostergrin. Wolfson. Milburn.
Here.
Censor.
Here. Approval of the agenda. Are there any deletions or additions to the agenda before we approve it? Discussion? Roll call?
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Approval of the consent agenda, the items in the consent agenda. You have all gotten, are there any items within that that you would like removed for further discussion or consideration?
Make a motion.
Okay, we have the meeting minutes from March 25th, 2024. The Lake Level Control Structure Special Meeting and our regular meeting minutes from March 27th, 2024. Class A's and the amount of $536,557.70. Claims and accounts and the amount of $185,755.80. Our correspondences from Grand Travers County regarding Senate Bill 662. Email to the Board of Commissioners regarding soil erosion. Spicer's letter to the Board of Commissioners. Um, the Roscommon Senior Center Board of Commissioners Correspondence Letter. Michigan State University Expansion Report. And an email regarding the State of Township Address from Girish Township in the MAC Legislation Update. We also have department reports from Economic Development and our Administrator Controller Report. Any further discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Roll call, please.
Censor. Yes. Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
I should carry it.
Public hearing ordinance number six, proposed soil erosion and sediment control. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
So move in, Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion to go in and come back out of public hearing when we're done.
Roll, just any further discussion? Roll call?
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
I should carry it.
Chase. Okay. So under the soil, soil erosion process through the state of Michigan, we are required to operate at a county level under state guidelines for soil erosion. One of our largest issues has been through the years, at least since I've been here. You really don't have any teeth as far as finding forfeitures and collections. It has been suggested for nine of the 10 years I've been here that we actually enact an ordinance that allows for this. And Mr. Shepke has put that together. We've had it reviewed by our legal team for enforcement purposes. And that is what is presented, been presented to you and now today for the public for comment. Do we have any public comment regarding the soil erosion and sediment control? I got it. Do we have anybody on Zoom for public comment regarding this?
We have a Mr. Greg Seemack.
Yes, hello. I'm assuming you can hear me. I just wondered what the ordinance might be, as it doesn't appear to be something that appeared in the packet that was available to be on the website. So maybe at least someone could read the ordinance or give us some idea or background as to exactly what it needs to contain.
Just wondering about the, what exactly the ordinance was. He couldn't, he couldn't find it on the website.
Okay, it's under soil erosion, but do you want to answer that, Chase? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, Greg. So the ordinance is pretty much identical. The county has not changed any ways we're managing soil erosion. All it does is it gives the county a little more backing and oomph when in dealing with violations and citations and following through with people not following the rules. So an ordinance just ordinance holds a little more power behind it than a resolution. It was, it was recommended by Eagle during our audit last year that we move to an ordinance to to help give the county a little more, I guess, backing and following through on some of these regulations.
Madam Chair.
Not coming through, Greg.
Yes, hi. I guess maybe you could give me a little direction as to where to find the ordinance so you don't have to take the time to read it. But I understand that what you're saying is it gives the county a little bit more leeway as to how they want to treat it. But I don't know what the ordinance itself is about to start with. So that that was my question.
All right, I I'll I'll email you a copy right after this meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yep. We have one more, Carrie Milburn.
Okay. Go ahead, Carrie. Or any other public comment?
Hello, can you, can you hear me? This is public, is this the public comment regarding the ordinance or the next item?
It's a public comment regarding the ordinance.
Okay, no, I'm good. I'm wait, I'm waiting for your public comment.
Okay.
On the next line.
No other public comment? Okay. Then we have a motion to come out of public hearing and enter back into our regular session. Do I have a second?
Move, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes. Yes.
I should carry it.
Now that we're back in regular session, we do have public comment. Is there any public comment out there?
First, we have Mr. Eric Ostergrin.
Okay.
Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm out here in sunny Las Vegas, but it's seven o'clock here. I had to get up at 5:30 to make this this meeting. Some of the things that I wanted to discuss, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, in the work session. Can you hear me? I'm being talked over.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, good. Um, in the work session, it was asked for a separate millage for MSU and Economic Development. In our last meeting, we discussed separately four items in the general fund. And I think we need to pursue them in our next meeting. We only have until May 14th to get this on the ballot. Those four items being public safety, emergency planning, MSU, and economic development. As discussed in the last meeting, I believe we should break these four items into their own separate village so they can stand on their own and the public could vote on them separately. I believe that emergency planning and public safety are within this commission's governmental responsibility in keeping the public safe from domestic and foreign threats. After talking with our controller, Jody, she stated that public safety utilizes 1.9 mils, and that includes payroll. And emergency planning is currently covered in our general fund. And in our meeting the other day, in the emergency planning meeting, according to Michelle Stevenson, we only have until May 14th to put this on the ballot for the next election in August. Splitting these four line items of the general fund will allow the public to determine how they feel about these sectors that we have been covering under the general fund. In the meeting I attended the other day in emergency planning, we discussed asking for a point one mil funding after removing it from a general fund. In our last meeting, we talked about the importance of separating these items without asking for a millage increase. Passing a millage increase will be very difficult, even a point five mil increase with everything that's been going on in the county. going on in the county. Public safety, emergency planning, MSU, and public economic development need to be split away from the general fund and voted on separately. On another topic, I asked Jamie Howserman what impact the solar project would have on our tax revenue, and she explained to me in an email that under current law, we couldn't receive, we wouldn't receive anything for 20 years. That's one of the reasons Circle Power will be willing to guarantee property taxes, even though they would have an opportunity to receive e-rebates upwards of paying nothing for 20 years at the normal rate I discussed in one of our previous meetings, which would mean upwards of $1 million a year to the county, and it would double the tax revenue for Higgins Township. This can still occur. A normal industrial project would not impact our tax revenue, but this project would. These are the things that we're going to be talking about during negotiations with Circle Power and the solar energy product, project. Circle Power wants this. When things get closer to putting a deal together, Circle Power will be willing to put that in writing, as they've done in other projects. So tax revenue to the county and Higgins Township will realize a lot of tax revenue. I just wanted to clear that up because some of our commissioners don't know about the tax revenue, the impact this project would have. As far as the Controller Administrator Updates Consent Agenda, I agree with Commissioner Milburn that it should be read into our public meetings. We should open this up for discussion in the next meeting. This is a new rule, and it should be changed back. Just because it's legal doesn't mean it's necessarily right. A lot of people, a lot of the public doesn't even know how to access the consent agenda. In fact, I don't see the agenda anywhere in the packet for the board, for the public to, uh, access. I couldn't find it. If I'm a commissioner and I can't find it, how is the public going to find it? Jody's comments to the board are posted, and, uh, I, and even though the public may be able to view them if you get that fixed, it's the same thing with the consent agenda. Again, just because we passed a rule that says we don't need to report to the public during our meetings, and they can look online to view it, which isn't true right now, doesn't make it legal, and it doesn't mean that it's right. Again, legal may not be right. And this isn't singling, I hear the, the thing, singling someone out. This isn't singling anyone out. It's just Jody an opportunity to explain to the public how our government operates. It really gives Jody an opportunity to shine. She covers a lot of material that we can then question in an open and transparent manner. Thank you very much.
Thanks. We have somebody else on Zoom?
Uh, next, we have Mr. Greg C. Mac.
Okay.
Yes, hello, and thanks again for allowing me to speak. I'm sorry, this might be a little redundant after what I just heard, but my comment was going to be also about the, the issue of the consent agenda, and I'm in agreement with Commissioner Milburn that there has to be more material to the public. And the consent agenda has always been something of a mystery to me anyway, but I looked all over to try to find on the packet that was available to the public from the website where the items of the consent agenda might be, and I couldn't find anything. So I'm just saying, I'm, I'm someone who frequently attends these meetings, and I do like to know what types of things would be reported in something like that. And so I'd like you to consider, it, it doesn't have to be, you know, everything doesn't have to be discussed, but at least some of the things that are things that the public might be most unaware of, let me put it that way, if they could be presented in some way, and even if it's like a Cliff Notes version, at least the public would understand what some of those reportings are. So thank you again for letting me speak.
Anybody else on Zoom? Any other public comment? Yes. Come on up. Nope, you gotta come up to the front.
Craig Cotterman. I can't hear, and I apologize. I do have hearing aids, but for some reason, I don't think a lot of people hear, hear as well. Uh, this goes on month after month. Seems like you should be able to update the sound system so people can actually hear what's going on here. Uh, thank you.
Anybody else? Do we have any visitors? Unfinished business, boiler inspection update. Commissioner Wolfson and Commissioner Russo, you both went to meet with Bill. Who would like to give the update?
Let me do it. Um, Dave and I went and looked at the issue with the boiler. We. Bill gave us a tour of everything there. Control on the wall that controls our heating systems is antiquated and probably needs to be upgraded to something that we can get components for, work with the system. Um, on the boiler that needs to be replaced or thought to be replaced, at that point, we see no evidence of needing replacement. I did come back in a couple days later, got approval from Jody to ask Bill to turn the water back onto that boiler. We did so. Seen no visible leak in the boiler. There was a couple leaks on the fittings on the outside the boiler. But after the boiler come up to some temperature because the other boilers were firing and, and it was getting heat, water circulating through it, those fittings quit leaking. Um, 24 hours later, I came back and looked, did inspection on it, found no leak on the boiler, pulled the doors off the burners, looked inside, seen no evidence of leaking on the burners. That still is not conclusive. Um, the boiler needs to be fired and some monitoring going on when it's going through its expansion and contraction cycle to see if something shows up. And I met with Bill this morning. He's going to put it back online and see if anything appears. Um, the video we were shown of the boiler on the back of the castings, that was not led to make a water seal. It had nothing to do with a water seal. That was only furnace cement put between the castings when they clamped them together. And that's an easy fix on that. I mean, it has, and it has no bearing on a leak. So at this point, we are still monitoring, see if a leak does show up in fact.
New questions?
Good job, good job, Rex. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. New business, Michigan's Other Great Lakes Trademarking. Commissioner Milburn, I'll let you take the lead on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. About 20 years ago, when Lois Bird was the Economic Development Director, I think it was, we came up to a meeting, they talked about different slogans for our county. And at the time, I think it was Move On Up. So I suggested, and I coined the phrase, Michigan's Other Great Lakes. Kind of threw it out there as a suggestion. Years later, we've obviously trademarked Michigan Other Great Lakes. I know it's on a lot of our chamber websites, it's on our literature, and right around five years ago, and Dave helped me out, was it about five years ago, we made a motion to adopt it as our trademark. However, we've never gone through the legal process. I really believe it's imperative for the, for this county, that Roscommon County is, is known as Michigan Other Great Lakes. So I think it's, it's important for us to explore the opportunity to get a lawyer involved to trademark our, our slogan, our logo. I think it's an important logo, and I think people, when they think of Roscommon County, they do think of us Michigan Other Great Lakes. So I would support your recommendation to move forward to get this legally trademarked by a lawyer.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, before we move forward on that, I'd like to see a cost estimate on achieving that.
I went online. Again, I don't have an exact cost estimate. I did go online just to kind of Google to see. And basically, it, what they'd have to do is they have to do a comprehensive federal and state trademark database search, common law database search, internet search, um, give a report, then you have the application process, monitoring, um, and then you have regular searches to make sure that you're protecting it and nobody else is using it. From what I can see, it's going to be anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000 to do that.
I think it's important that we trademark our logo and we capture that, that motto, that slogan.
Any discussion?
Can other agencies kick in some monies? Do we know of?
Nothing I'm aware of, Dave. I think it's important that the county capture, that the county captures the cost. I know it's $4,000 to $6,000, but the kicker is that at the end of the day, it is our slogan. I think it's important that we capture that, that, that slogan.
I know currently the Houghton Lake Tourism Bureau uses that slogan on their website.
So we could kick in too.
We could ask them to, to support. We can't, we can't demand it. We can only ask.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I would not approve spending that kind of money on this at this point. We had made a commitment to our employees for extra money at the end of the year, as long as our budget could do it. And I think we need to be a little more conscious of how we spend our money so we can try and take care of our employees like we said we would. So I'm not in favor of spending this money at this time.
Yes.
And I, and I vehemently disagree, I respectfully disagree, I should say. I think it's important that we capture a trademark in our, it's important for the county to be known as Michigan's Other Great Lakes. I understand the sensitivity of the cost, but it's important that we capture that trademark. We got signs up at Houghton Lake Chamber that said Michigan's Other Great Lakes. Need to capture that slogan. I would, I would request, Madam Chair, for consideration, maybe a motion in the next meeting. Just consideration.
Why don't you check with these other agencies first?
Let's, let's get a motion out there. We can ask the chambers to kick in, but we can't demand it.
Any other comments or questions? Motions and resolutions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I want to say point of order, but however, during the work session, we went back when we had our items, and so you haven't, so there was no, so I want to make sure that Commissioner Milburn understands that if nobody else supported that, that it will not be coming forward as a motion at the next meeting.
At the next meeting. I want to do some more research on it.
Yes.
What do I, do I, so would, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So you're inferring that I need to get a second right now to see if we can move forward to put it as a motion?
On the next meeting, yes.
I would like to see it on the next meeting. And I'm looking for support of one commissioner. Just because the commissioner agrees with me to put it on the motion doesn't necessarily mean they have to agree with it, to vote on it. Just want to have a discussion.
We can put it on as a motion, but I mean, at this point, I, I need more information on it.
Fine with that, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yeah.
Motion number one. Move to approve the appointment of Chase Shepkey as Deputy Drain Commissioner effective April 10, 2024. This is an unpaid appointment to continue through December 31st, 2024.
So move. Second.
Discussion. Roll, please.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Senator.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Committee reports. Commissioner Milburn? Okay, Commissioner Russo.
I, uh, met with Bill and Rex regarding the boilers. I'd like to thank Bill because he took me in the other rooms also. I did attend the airport egg drop along with Mr. Milburn. Uh, it's a really nice thing that they actually do for the kids. Very, very nice. Uh, that's all I have at this time.
Um, I had a agenda meeting on Thursday, April 4th, and on Friday, March 29th, I attended the Michigan Roots Region 7B meeting over in West Branch. Um, we talked about some personnel issues as far as giving raises to certain individuals, and I will be attending um, a conference down at the state capitol to where they will be giving out impact awards, and that impact award involves the Roscommon County Road Commission. Commissioner Wolfson?
They had no meetings with, other than with the boiler, boiler issue. We do have a meeting this afternoon. Representatives from Eagle on the materials waste management.
Port comment. Commissioner Milburn?
Later this time, Madam Chair.
Um, I did receive an email from the DNR, Megan Stevenson, who is the Land Use Program Leader, stating that they will be filing a notice of intent to lease the state-owned land. They had already entered into this agreement, um, back, I believe it was in 2022 with Circle Power, her proposed utility scale solar project in Higgins Township, Roscommon County. Um, they renewed that in 2023. It was amended to revise the project footprint. They increased the acres from 579,000 to 1,007, or 1,011 acres. And I do believe this is the same project that Commissioner Ostrigan has been speaking about in prior meetings. Met with the delegated authority and Commissioner Wilson regarding the Advisory Board applicants for the Houghton Lake, Lake Level Control Structure, and the delegated authority will be giving us an update at our next meeting later today. And just meeting with Commissioner Wilson, Jody, and Eagle Planning Specialist Christina Miller regarding materials management later today. Commissioner Wilson, any board comment? Do we have any public comment?
Excuse me, yes, we do.
Uh, Mr. Eric Ostrigan.
Okay.
Uh, thank you very much again. Since I was not able to be there for, or to talk about my committee reports, I, I did attend a meeting, uh, with emergency planning, and Vanessa discussed planning, emergency planning, and how to access emergency services, landing zones for airplanes and such. Uh, she discussed the 1,000-page document from the feds and the difficulty in working with it, and we're in the process of developing our own in emergency planning. We need a more, she feels we need a more targeted, specific plan based on what we need here. Plan needs to be more coordinated. Ken Melvin said that we had no coordination with the DNR fire. When the last fire in Grayling occurred, nothing was coordinated. We were close to evacuating Roscommon, and we're lucky we didn't have to do that. This year, there'll be a big potential fire hazard because we haven't had much snowfall, Ken feels. And Vanessa emailed the fire, uh, district director for Roscommon during that, during the meeting to coordinate fires that may happen this summer, how we're going to work together. Vanessa discussed the Rescue Tax Force, who's a group of folks on very, various scenarios like active shooter and so forth, and they are fire, and they are a fire and EMS group as, and support group for first responders, life-saving support, medical to local police, et cetera, similar to medevac in, or, or, uh, yeah, I'm not quite sure the word medic in, in a word. Uh, Donnie Burkett is working on developing this program. Northern Exposure is doing a simulated exercise on June 15th at Camp Grayling. On June 26th, we're going to be participating in an emergency operations center to do a statewide simulation on a power outage in Michigan. This will be the first full ELC practice simulation done in quite a while. Vanessa discussed numerous training seminars she's attended. It, it was quite extensive. She also discussed the upcoming training seminars. Additionally, she's getting certified to host seminars, which will save us money in training our folks. Wildfire Workshop, except going to be attending an instructional presentation and evaluation skills in Maryland that is being paid for by FEMA, not the county. Jody mentioned that having Vanessa to be a trainer enables us to train local townships and coordinating our actions with townships and emergency planning. This saves the county money also. Vanessa said that a $1,550 grant was obtained for hazardous materials. Um, also discussed. Also discussed was separating emergency planning from the general budget so we could ask for a separate millage for emergency planning, as I discussed in my prior comments. This would make emergency planning stand on its own. And we're looking at a point one millage, which is not very much. It's $10 for every $100,000 of property, so taxable property. So that's not going to be very much. And I got to talk about this cost for the trademark that Commissioner Milburn brought up earlier. The cost is relatively low for a trademark search. I disagree with the four to $6,000 figure. I I've done trademarks on my own and have cost me next to nothing. But it's not a patent and I think we need to search into that a little bit more and get, you know, if you if you went to a really highly compensated lawyer, I can see them charging me four to 6,000, but a trademark shouldn't be that much of an issue. So I think I think the trademark was Michigan's Other Great Lakes. And if that's correct, I think that's a that's a great trademark. Thank you.
Any other public comment? With no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned. All in favor say aye.
Aye.